...of the Marion County Board of Education. And before we actually start with the agenda and all that, our representative Tracy Estes has a presentation he'd like to do.
Thank you ma'am. This is just a small token, was talking about how proud we are of this young lady. And I've told her this, and I mean this from the bottom of our hearts, she could be the poster child to represent the Marion County Schools. She has the most engaging personality and just an humble spirit. I don't think she ever meets a stranger. And so wonderful to have her finish here in our system. And I can't help but wonder all the great things that she's going to accomplish for her family and for herself. I know she's got a bright future ahead. She just jumped in last year, just out of the blue, and started helping with our campaign. And that was the first time more than just in passing I had got to actually speak with her. And her personality is just infectious. And so I've come to really appreciate her and her family and how much she has kind of made of my wife and I. Most of you know, we lost her mom not long before graduation, earlier this year. And my wife and I were living in Bevill one night, and I did just lay there and talk and bounce ideas off each other. And I said, "What can we do?" And I said, "Flowers, those will pass." So I have to give my wife credit for kind of the idea to start a memorial scholarship in her mother's memory. And of course, she's going to be our inaugural recipient. And this is something we're going to do as long as the Lord allows us to. Marion County High School every year is offering a scholarship, a Bevill Pearson Memorial Scholarship. And so we're going to let superintendent, and I've already spoken, how we're going to work out the details of getting everything forwarded directly to her college of choice. She's already taken some classes at Bevill this summer, and I know done extremely well. And she is going to be going to NUW. So we're very proud of her. So McKenzie, if you'd come up, I'll just give you this. This is just a little token of our expression of how much we appreciate you. And I appreciate what you stand for and how you conduct yourselves and how you've represented our school. I already do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to get a picture with superintendent?
And I would like to say also, she won the National Federal Program Scholarship. And I was so excited and happy when they announced that she was the winner of that scholarship as well. So not many people win national scholarships.
No.
Do we want the door in the background or not? Or does it matter?
Maybe catty corner right here. In front of the podium. Yeah. Come on through.
We'll get there.
Yeah. I still got a door in the back though. Three, two, one. Making fun of mine. Turn it off. All right. Three, two, one. Looks good.
Thank you. I'm so proud.
Well, why don't you open?
What is your brother's name?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
I could not play better today in my life.
What is it?
Thomas.
Thomas, yes.
He's the youngest.
Okay. This time we'll go ahead and take a look at the agenda. Adopted agenda, approved minutes of our last meeting, review financial statements, payroll and payments. We'll approve local school payments, examiner of public accounts report, mission to facilitate PHEP refunds, declare reduction in force, permission to renew SSA membership and AASB membership, approve Head Start Mills contract, approve fleet insurance renewal, volunteers, and then we'll have personnel.
Okay ma'am president, I don't have anything to add to that agenda, and we recommend that it is adopted as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Burleson makes the motion and the second. Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we have adopted the agenda, approved minutes of the last meeting.
And I would ask if you would consider items two for five as one action item.
Okay. And do we vote on that, Clint? No.
Just vote on all five of them.
If we want it to be five, do I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Weatherly makes the motion and second. Ms. Burleson seconds. All in favor, and that also is unanimous. Next we'll hear about our examiner of public accounts.
Denise Olive from the Examiner of Public Accounts is with us today, and we're happy to have her, and she's going to present the audit report. And you're Mr. Right there? Okay.
In 2006, the Alabama Board of Education passed an act that we refer to as the School Fiscal Accountability Act. And that's, that required that once an audit for a school system is released, that we come and present it at a public meeting, the results of that audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also the governmental auditing standards. And we did that for the purpose of rendering an opinion on the financial statements and to determine whether the board complied with applicable laws and regulations. And we also conduct our audit of the board's federal financial assistance, and we do that in accordance with now uniform guidance, which is the new standard for that. We issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which basically means that the financial statements were materially correct and they were in compliance with the generally accepted accounting standards. And we also did not find any reason to think that there were any matters where the board did not comply with the applicable laws and regulations that they're subject to. In addition, we issued an unqualified opinion on the board's federal financial assistance, which again means that materially the amounts shown as federal assistance were correct and that all the compliance requirements were met substantially. And this past audit, we audited the Title I program.
That's all right? Okay.
Thank you so much. Of course Clint and Melinda and his team, the back hall do a great job of making sure that we stay in compliance with everything. And Clint's been here 22, 23 years, and you know, that, but seriously, that is a lot to be thankful for, that he has continued with this system and knows the laws and rules and regulations because that can get you in trouble. So we certainly always want to comply with everything that we're supposed to. All right, so moving on.
Okay, let's give some permission to facilitate some PHEP refunds.
And Clint's going to give you a short sentence of this hell big refund.
So I'm guessing probably several of y'all will also be getting refunds. But long story short, AEA sued PHEP because of some questionable ways that they changed our PHEP premiums back in 2016. That court case proceeded through in the Supreme Court back a few months ago, determined that PHEP had illegally changed the premiums without the correct notice. So they issued, so PHEP now has to issue $100 million refund across the state. PHEP's going to handle everybody that retired before 2016, and then they've asked the board to handle everybody that retired since 2016, and all the active people, and all the people that worked for us during that 2016 to 2018 period that have either been terminated or voluntarily resigned, or just moved on to other systems outside the state. And so the refund amount that we are going to be putting through, we've got those notes, and I didn't bring them with me, I apologize, about $321,000 that PHEP sent us last Thursday, we'll be putting that through on the July payroll. The permission we're getting here is the people, there were 48 people that have, that are no longer employed by the board, and we're not getting checks in July. Well, the way the software works is you have to get a check to get a refund. And so we came up with the idea that we'll pay everybody a penny in substitute wages. So basically, I'm asking for permission to spend 48 cents. But what that does, it allows us to pay all those retirees and the people that are no longer with us, and get this done over with, and we'll move on. So that's what we intend to do, is at the end of the month, to get those PHEP refunds processed.
Are there any questions about that? Okay, then I would recommend that you give permission for us to facilitate the PHEP refund for 48 employees who retired or were terminated after January 1st, 2016, by authorizing a one cent substitute payment in July.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Burleson makes the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Okay, declare reduction in force this next.
Okay, we had two children enrolled in our system who required a sign language interpreter. And one of the two has withdrawn from our school system. So that meant at that point, we only need one sign language interpreter. Both of our sign language interpreters had tenure, and so we had to go to the reduction in force policy. And unfortunately, you know, we have to, we only need the services of one sign language interpreter at this time. So I would recommend that you declare a reduction in force and reduce the number of sign language interpreters for Marion County Schools from two to one, due to one of the two students requiring these services withdrawing from our school system.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, Mr. Weatherly seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Permission to renew SSA membership.
Hey, you know, we always retain our membership in the School Superintendents of Alabama, and they of course provide a lot of training and information for us. And I would recommend that you give permission to renew the SSA membership for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $7,966.40.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Burleson makes the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and that is unanimous. Permission to renew AASB membership.
Okay, and just the same as with SSA, we remain members of the Alabama Association of School Boards. And again, they provide training for us and information. And I would recommend that you give permission for the renewal of the Alabama Association of School Board's membership for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $9,958.94. And the good news, the legal assistance fund fee has been waived this year because there are currently no pending cases. So we usually have that fee as well, but that has been waived this year.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, the second. Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Approve Head Start Mills contract.
Each year we have to approve the Head Start Mills contract, and the prices do go up in a slight amount. And this year, the prices did go up just a little bit. But I would recommend that you approve the Head Start Mills contract for the 2019-2020 school year, and the prices will be as follows. Breakfast, $2.60. Lunch, $4. Snack, $1.60. A staff breakfast will be $3.05, and a staff lunch will be $4.20.
Okay, do I have a motion? The motion, Mr. Weatherly second. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Approve fleet insurance renewal.
Again, another necessity that is time to renew, to keep our buses and our driver's aid cars and all of our vehicles that the board owns covered by insurance. And so I'd recommend that you approve renewing the fleet insurance coverage with Auto Owners Incorporated for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $40,179.26.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, second. Mr. Weatherly seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Next we have volunteers.
Okay, we'll pull that up. We have a couple of volunteers that need to be approved, one for Hackleburg High School and the other for Phillips High School. And I would recommend that you approve the volunteers according to your handout.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion and second. Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously. Personnel.
And we have, we have several personnel items. We have, we had some shifting around that prompted some positions to have, that have to be posted, and we've got some positions that close today. And then we've got some positions that close on the 25th, and then we have one position that doesn't close until August 1st. So you know, we've had some people that, as you will see, we have some resignations, people that have left. And after we got our Title I budget, which was around July, well, it's last week. It was, it was last week. After we got that budget in place, and even what we were going to have, we were able to add a couple of spots for some intervention teachers at a couple of our schools. So we have some things that are still posted that I will need to get permission to place later, but these are the action items that we have today. So we have three resignations, two certified and one non-certified. And I would recommend that you approve the resignations as listed on your handout.
Okay, do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Fowler makes the motion, Ms. Burleson seconds. All in favor, and it is unanimous.
And then we have one termination, and again, that is due to the reduction in force that we have just declared. It is necessary to terminate the employment of that specific sign language interpreter, and I would recommend that you approve that termination as presented.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Mr. Weatherly seconds. All in favor, and it's unanimous.
Okay, and under employment for the 2019-2020 school year, we have two certified positions at Phillips Elementary School, and then we have two non-certified positions. And one of them is, you know, since Connie came here, that caused a trickle effect with the elementary school lunchroom. And so this is the last piece of that to go back in place. And I would recommend that you approve the employment as listed of certified and non-certified on your handout.
Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Weatherly makes the motion, Ms. Fowler seconds. All in favor, and it is unanimous.
Okay, and we had some transfer requests, and some of this, some of this moving around has been caused because we have lost some students. And so we have three certified and two non-certified positions. And the top non-certified, that was really supposed to have been done last month, and I just inadvertently left that one off. That was on that sheet that you were given at the June meeting. And that was just inadvertently left off last month. So I would recommend that you approve the transfers as presented on your handout.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Ms. Burleson seconds. All in favor, and it is unanimous.
Okay, and we have one leave of absence because one of our reading coaches has been asked to come and join the Alabama Reading Initiative team at the State Department. And so she's requested a one-year leave of absence. We will have a memorandum of understanding with the State Department. She's basically on loan from our school system. We've had a couple of other people in the past that have had the opportunity to do this, but you know, we're pretty proud that the State Department recognizes the excellence in our school system and wanted this particular person to come and work with the Alabama Reading Initiative. And it is for one year, but they do put in a memorandum of understanding that it is with the possibility of renewal. So I think it could be longer than one year. But I would recommend that you approve the leave of absence as presented on your motion.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, the second. Mr. Weatherly seconds. All in favor, and it passes unanimously.
And I would request permission to post and place, and I will, when I get those recommendations for placement, I will get in touch with you if it's something for one of your schools. But I would request that so that we can hopefully have people in place for schools to start.
Okay, Mr. Weatherly makes that motion. Ms. Burleson seconds. All in favor?
I don't know. What was the motion? Was I go too fast? Who did the motion? I'm sorry.
Ms. Fowler.
Fowler's second.
No, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. I'm the person placing, Mr. Weatherly made the motion, and Ms. Burleson seconded.
I was looking for on the slide, and it wasn't here.
Anything else? Our next meeting?
Okay, our next, yes, our next meeting. And then I have some things to go over in the superintendent's report. So we were looking at the possibility of August 20th, that's a Tuesday. Is that good or bad?
It's good.
Is it good, August 20th on Tuesday for our next meeting? And Clint and I were looking at the meetings that we could set for our budget hearing. And so we were looking at possibly August the 29th, and then September 12th. And the September 12th budget hearing would be a part of our board meeting. So if you would look at your calendars for certain, you would certainly be welcome to come on the 29th, but especially on September 12th. We would have that as before the actual board meeting.
So that would be the board meeting or the?
It would be the September board meeting, September 12th. So it's August 29th.
Okay, so what time? Who were those?
On September 12th at 10:00. And then August 29th, we usually have that one at 5:00. So that people that, you know, can't be here during the workday could attend that budget meeting.
We usually have it at 6:00.
At 6:00, okay, sorry about that. 6:00 on August 29th, and the regular 10:00 on September 12th for our budget hearings. Okay? And then I have a few things to go over. You will notice in your share file, if you look at your sales tax comparison. June was really, really good. We were so pleased with that. So in June, our sales, you know, last month we were down $4,000, but June was up $22,224.6 from one year ago. And if you, if you scroll across there and you look back to when the economy had tained and things were really, really bad 11 years ago, which would have been 2008, which was right before that happened, we were, we're up $79,000 from that month, 11 years ago. And then like from nine years ago, $74,000. So I think it says that we have things that are coming into Hamilton, that are bringing people into Hamilton for conferences and things. And you know, hopefully, it also says that our people are shopping here at home and keeping their top tax dollars here to help our schools and our municipalities and our county commissions. So we're really thankful that people are shopping in Marion County, and it comes back and helps, it helps all of us. So that's great for it to be up that much. Our advancement in technology funds, Chris and Clint and I have worked on that, and I think everything now has been ordered. We ordered three school buses and things for cameras, intercom and phone systems, Chromebooks, carts. We've had Google training this summer so that our teachers are going to be trained and equipped to use Google Classroom when school starts. And Chris told me this morning that hopefully the security cameras and the intercom and phone systems that have all been added for security reasons are going to be ready for when school starts. So he's worked hard to get everybody in place to get that done. I have an accreditation letter that I'm going to hand out to you. I'm not going to go over to the report today because I don't want to do it when Mr. Jones is not here. But I do have this letter that, that is addressed, Dear Administrator, Marion County Board of Education, who's been awarded accreditation by the North Central Association Commission on Accreditation and School Improvement, the Northwest Accreditation Commission, and the Southern Association of College and Schools Commission on Accreditation and School Improvement. The three listed regional agencies provide your institution with a highly regarded accreditation that is recognized throughout the world. Congratulations on this significant recognition. So we're very pleased to get this. We got a certificate for this office, as well as all of our schools, yesterday they came. And so we're going to get those framed and get them out to the schools because this is really something to be proud of, and we are very pleased that that process is behind us and that we were found worthy of accreditation. So that was a, that's very good. I also have a handout, I think I already put it there for you, in active legislation in the recent session, just something that you can take home and look over. One thing, and I'll go over this with the principals next week, but for instance, one thing requires the pledge of allegiance to be conducted at the beginning of each school day in K-12 public schools. Students who refuse may not be punished or penalized. But that was a bill in the past, which I know a lot of schools do that already, but not everybody does. So that is something that's very important, and our legislature recognized that and passed legislation that everyone would say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of each school day. Lots of things that pertain to education in this, and I wanted to make sure that you had a copy of that. Our policy review and revision that we'll be going through that process with the Alabama Association of School Boards. I got an email a couple of days ago, and I talked to Melissa McKee this morning. She said as soon as she gets all of the updates completed with the newly enacted legislation, that we'll be ready to start into that process. So probably early September, we'll be talking about dates to get together to begin that process, to start looking at our, our board policies and the revision of that. And I'm really, I told her this morning, I said, "Oh, I'm just so looking forward to that." And she said, "Well, I hope you still feel that way at the end of the process." And I said, "Well, you know, we're not the old policy manual." And she said, "And usually people that are in that situation, they still feel good about it after the process is over because it'll be much more streamlined and up to date and current." And so that's going to, I think that's going to be a good, a good thing for our system to go through. New teacher orientation is July 30th and 31st, and that will be here. So we will have, hopefully we'll have most of our people in place in time to come to that. And let me invite you again to our countywide in-service. It's August 2nd, it's at the Bevill Center. We have two just amazing speakers that are coming that day. One of them, his name is Dr. Vincent Windrow, and he works at the Middle Tennessee State University. And he grew up in extreme poverty. And so that's, you know, he talks to teachers about what it's like for children living in poverty, but he is a really dynamic motivational speaker. And then we also have Sonya Martin, and she spoke at the Abuse Conference back in the spring, and we heard her and wanted her to come. But she talks about the brain research that shows that children being raised in trauma, how it affects their brain development. And that's something that, you know, we all as educators need to understand, that, that children are affected, not just emotionally, but their, their brain development is actually affected by that. So I think that will be something really good, and I'd like to invite all of you to come. And Kevin certainly wanted to invite all of you to come to in-service. And one more thing, the Alabama High School Athletic Association recognized the following Marion County Board employees or recent retirees. At their banquet last weekend, we had two people from our system that received the Making a Difference Award. And one for District One, that was Johnny Harden, who has recently retired as the Hackleburg High School principal. And the Class 5, the Making a Difference Award went to Rush Holcomb, who is a coach at Hamilton High School, coaching teacher at Hamilton High School. So we're really proud that we had two people from our system recognized. So, we're really proud that we had two people from our system recognized for making a difference in the lives of our students. And also Scott Bill was recognized for winning the 1A Girls Basketball State Championship. So, really proud of all of these people and their accomplishments and their recognition.
Can I just say briefly, I was at that event, this board could not have been more proud of what our folks did and how well they represented us. Also, Marion County High School, Karen Mobley, she graduated back around our time.
Eighty-three.
And her son was recognized as a 1A state championship track coach. So, that's indirectly foreign kind of that will claim.
That was a product of our school system, yes.
But they did outstanding. Rush's, I mean Johnny's was good. They did like a five-minute video presentation on each of those where they had come to the perspective skills. Buddy Rush's just some things he had dealt with our kids and he had a very strong spiritual bent on his. And it was just the response it drew from people at the table. I was sitting around and the surrounding tables, just hearing people's comments, even though his video was being played, it was outstanding.
Well, we talk about children being raised in trauma. He has taken a lot of those children into his home and truly made a huge difference in their lives. So, we're proud of them. Anything else? Anybody else have anything they need to report?
Then I would recommend that we have a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a motion? Ms. Fowler makes the motion, Ms. Burleson second, all in favor, and it is unanimous and we adjourn.